Alright. It's working right? Yeah, I think so. Alright. Alrighty. My apologies there. We're gonna put a stop, I mean a timer for ten minutes again. Indicating our first break from the first cycle. And yeah, the reason I like I I like you did a whole spiel on why I do these sessions and everything. But then I had the YouTube timer set up, which is like after twenty minutes, like it just shuts off YouTube. And I think I got that rid of got rid of it. So hopefully it continues working. But yeah, um, so we're gonna be we're about to do cycle two and three. We're just gonna do a ten minute break before, um, just to go over exactly uh kind of why I do this and all that stuff. So I I I truly believe that with these three hours, you put yourself at least two, three days ahead. Um, especially if you're just learning a skill for students, I think three hours every day once like once a day is enough to study, even if you're taking four or five courses. Um, I know if I had access to this type of productivity back when I was first or second year university, it would be a lot more easier for me. So during the ten minute breaks, what I usually do is if I'm doing creative work such as script work or something like that, I will just doodle around, um, just to make sure that I stay in the flow state. What I mean by do, there's a lot of research on this as well, to keep you in the flow state and keep you creative as well. Um, so what I mean by doodling is just kind of like going around circles, forming some kind of like like a regular form that you just kind of flow with like, um, I'm not saying draw or anything, just make shapes, just make like random shapes, circles, triangles, you know, so stuff like that. This like activates your, um, I believe it's left side of, no, right side of your brain and stuff. And it actually allows for uh more creative powers to be bestowed upon you when you're actually back in the deep work session. And it kind of keeps you in the flow state as well. Um, because I'm doing applied learning today, I'm just applying a lot of, um, like concepts, applying on concepts, uh, doing a bunch of questions and stuff like that. Uh, it it I don't really do doodling. What I do is I'll probably do a meditation session for ten minutes, just a guided session, just to get those attentional resources back. The acetylcholine goes up. The uh meditation session buffers that acetylcholine or even brings it down and then you can go crazy with uh your next applied session as well. The the if you're a student and you're learning concepts and things of that sort, I would highly, highly recommend doing questions on concepts from different angles. And let's say your book doesn't have access to questions or, um, you just like you even have additional books and it doesn't have any questions for you that you can attack, or the questions are very similar. So you're doing the same type of questions. Have you ever been in a position where you study, um, a concept? But it's you only study it one way so that when you actually go to the exam, they test it in a different creative way. And you're like, damn, like you get stuck, you don't know what to do. So what like doing multiple type of questions, hitting every concept from different angles helps with this. It prevents you from being stuck in that situation and, um, allows you to just attack the question because you've already been familiar with the concept so well from different angles. So if your book doesn't have this stuff, what you can do is you can actually go on chat GPT and then give them the concepts that you're studying and tell them to create, like tell chat GPT to create a framework for you of a bunch of questions that you can just practice. And make sure you ask chat GPT to change the 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 like the question, the answer isn't always same. Like you have to uh make the process more creative, tell chat GPT to hit that concept from different angles. And honestly, it does miracles like I study that way. My fiance studies that way as well. Um, just using chat GPT, just uses it as a resource because it's present now. Back in the day, it wasn't, but now it is. So utilize that and that way you can actually become an expert in that concept. And one other thing I want to focus on is like if you're uh weak in a concept and you're strong in a different concept, so the strong concept, just let go because the thing is you're just boosting your ego by continuing on with that concept and doing questions on it, which is great if you just need some confidence boost, but it's not really productive. Um, instead of that, work on the weak concept. And, um, although for maybe first day, you might not get that concept, but what you can do is you can actually use a app called Anki, Anki Deck or something. I used to use it for my MCAT when I was studying. And I can even put in the description in this live as well. And what this app actually does is, um, it you can fill in a weak concept, a concept that you're weakened. Um, just fill in the the description of it, fill in some practice questions and fill in the concept. And then it just frequently tells you to revisit that concept. Maybe it'll give you a notification every um, other day, every third day, like whatever. And then in the beginning, it'll be more frequent. And then once you get better at the concept, it'll start scheduling it later. So this is called like, um, the the oh, I forget the word, but it's the frequency at which you, um, attack a concept regularly. So it gets ingrained in your like your gray matter, your DNA, and you never forget that concept. Um, so it's it's basically like this idea of use it or lose it kind of thing. So things that you are already really strong with, like you might not need to use them as much. But things that you're weak with, you should use it frequently so that you don't lose it. So even being a nurse myself, like sometimes if I take, uh, like I have vacation right now, it's if I'm off for a month, I I forget, I feel like I forgot some skills. So then I just researched them and just get them back on my working memory. So it's like I can do the skills again. So yeah, you gotta you gotta get those reps in with those weaknesses and focus on the weaknesses instead of your strengths all the time. Um, unless you're like specializing in something, then do your thing. But, um, yeah, that's kind of the way to study for sure. And yeah, like we got four minutes, uh, you can doodle, you can do whatever. I'm gonna drink some coffee and my apologies again, um, for the technical difficulties. It unfortunately happened, uh, but I do want you to experience this session just so like you get motivated and you just repeat it over and over again, build that endurance and just it becomes a second part of your day. Because in today's society, I recognize that, um, like your attentional resource is very important. And unfortunately, like with TikTok reels and stuff, you're always changing your environment all the time. So it's very hard to focus for a long period of time. So, um, that's why I do these sessions, just so that I never lose touch with, um, reality and, um, having my attention like which is already at a deficit from ADHD, but, uh, just so I can like make sure my capacity of attention is always like high. So yeah, that's, uh, one of the reasons I do it as well. So I'm gonna drink some coffee and let's get the second session going. We got about three minutes and then you can doodle, do whatever you want. I'll probably be coming to like my phone every thirty minutes just to make sure it's still functioning. Um, so we can continue this live session without any interruptions. But you guys stay focused. Just gonna go to the washroom real quick because I drank a bunch of water and protein shake. Alright, so timer's off. Uh, please use the breaks because that's when your attentional resources come back so you can attack another productive session. If you don't use the breaks, you'll just burn out maybe like sec halfway through a second session. Obviously, you can build your capacity, um, to stay focused in the moment for a while, but um, you don't want to do it that way. Just do it the better way. Alright, so we're gonna put a timer now for fifty minutes again. So this is cycle two, guys. Let's get it.
You
I'm gonna go to the washroom real quick, because I drank a bunch of water and protein shake. Alright, so we're gonna put a timer now for fifty minutes again. So this is cycle two, guys. Let's get it.